Next we have discussion items. We had a patient request to address the board. That is Sherri Dunn and Shawn Ludwig.
It's limited in my timing here for this discussion item, so I went ahead and put myself on the comment portion in case this time is limited. Recently, an acknowledgement by the board was made public that there has been too little information forthcoming that has caused misinformation, speculation, and mistrust to flourish, and that the district and school board are committed to providing greater transparency, which in turn builds trust, provides accurate information, and ends speculation. I made this request so the community can hear directly from the board in public, which arguably provides the greatest amount of transparency. According to June 18th minutes, the board accepted the resignation letter of Adam Benner, former Tri-West High School principal. Public contract records indicate Mr. Benner was the highest-paid principal in the school district at over eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. So on June 18th, under heat of the investigation, and after fourteen years with the school district, Mr. Benner abruptly resigns. Mr. DiAgostino, it is my understanding you and Mr. Benner are rather close friends. Is that correct?
Answer it.
If we're committed to being transparent, this is going to be hard if you guys are not answering questions.
I'm also a friend of Mr. Benner.
Okay. Between May—here are my questions for you, Mr. DiAgostino. Between May 28th and June 8th—the date that Mr—sorry, June 6th—the date that Mr. Benner submitted his resignation, did you talk with Mr. Benner about his decision?
You don't.
Did you advise him to resign?
Correct.
These are fair and appropriate questions when you—
We will respond appropriately.
These are the same—these are the same questions that I would submit via the frequently-asked-question email link that you guys have provided. They fall within the guidelines, and there's no reason why you shouldn't be answering them. These are the same ones that when you offered to meet with me personally and convene with me, that I would have asked you at that point, but I would like the public to hear your answer. So— Did you talk with or advise Mr. Bagley or Mrs. Bagley about their situation during the time that they were being investigated or on administrative leave? The reason why I ask is because you were seen hanging out with Mr. and Mrs. Bagley while they were on paid leave. The district website addresses this, and your more than ten-year-long friendship with them. So you were hanging out with your close friends that are on paid leave, enjoying an afternoon together, close friends who could be faced with termination, knowing that the people who would decide the fate of their employment would include yourself. The district site says you went as far as to seek legal counsel, in which you were assured there was no legal issue. Why did you feel the need to seek legal counsel to hang out with Mr. and Mrs. Bagley while they were on paid leave? Is it because you recognized concern for a conflict of interest? Mr. DiAgostino, would your actions not suggest that your vote not to terminate Mr. and Mrs. Bagley was already determined prior to learning the findings of the internal investigation? Please tell me how parents can feel confident that you are not putting your own interests ahead of their children, and that your vote was objective and not based on your friendship with Mr. and Mrs. Bagley. Since you have been close friends with all three administrators for over ten years, do you think it was strange that Mr. Benner resigned and that Mr. and Mrs. Bagley did Mr. Cyverson, do you believe the board's refusal to publicly answer questions about their conduct is in alignment with a commitment to transparency stated on the district site? As the board not doing so contradicts the statement, causing even further speculation that the board is hiding behind a webpage to try and appear transparent when in fact Mr. Peoples, did Mr. Springer ever share with the board his concerns about Mr. Benner's actions regarding issues with Mr. Bruce's conduct? Did Mr. Springer ever share with the board his concerns about Mr. Benner's actions regarding issues with Mr. Bruce's conduct?
Not correct.
No? Okay. Prior to resigning—prior to resigning, do you know was Mr. Springer going to recommend that Mr. Benner be terminated? Mrs. Griffith, did it raise any red flags for you that Mr. Benner resigned so quickly at the start of this investigation?
I don't know what Mr. Benner's reasons were.
Didn't that make you think that there was possibly something serious about this situation? I mean, if there was nothing to all of this, why would the principal abruptly resign?
I don't know why he resigned. We have—in education—I have to say, education is—
All guys.
—in other professions. People change jobs all the time.
Well—
All guys.
Well, as a community member, I have to ask myself, why would a principal with fourteen years at a school district, you know, abruptly resign? And I came up with several good reasons if they're going to retire, if there's a career change, or if they find a position that's higher-paying, that would make sense as well. And I came across a picture, though, and if you would like, I can show you that picture, that would indicate otherwise. On July 9th, the school board voted to put three employees on paid administrative leave. The minutes from the meeting that day indicate that Vice President of the school board and Uncle to Tyler Bruce, Mr. Brad Williams, participated in all three votes that evening. That's three oversights, in favor of putting Mr. Bruce as well as Stacy Bagley and Nate Bagley on paid leave. While you have abstained from various other votes in regards to this matter, your mere attendance creates a conflict of interest. You know the agenda prior to every meeting that takes place, so I question why show up to a five-minute meeting for Mr. and Mrs. Bagley when abstaining from voting on the only agenda item? This would have to make it difficult for the people sitting next to you. Mr. Kessinger, in your legal opinion, is it appropriate for Mr. Williams to stay active on the board, attend or participate in any meetings in which he could become privy to information regarding the investigation of his nephew, and should he be voting on matters directly related to the investigation?
He did not participate in any of those activities. He recused himself and was not present at any of the hearings or any other activities.
Was he not present at any of the hearings? I know he did not participate in any of the hearings, but let me continue.
He recused himself and left the meetings.
Should he be voting? He did vote. He voted on July 9th.
I believe that's correct. On the original action, I believe he did.
Right. For all three employees.
It was the administrative leave. I believe that's correct.
Yes.
That's the only participation he had.
The oversight.
Pardon?
That was the oversight.
That took place.
I'm going to fast-forward now to July 26th to Mr. Bruce's hearing. Mr. Williams, I know that you did not participate in Mr. Bruce's hearing on July 26th. However, did you go to the hearing, and were you there when the hearing first started?
I recused myself.
But for Mr. and Mrs. Bagley's hearing, you did not show up at all.
No.
Okay. So was the board under the impression that you could possibly be participating in the hearing on July 26th?
No.
So you recused yourself. Upon leaving the room where the hearing was being held, did you stop and speak with witnesses for several minutes?
I—
Do you think that was appropriate to stop in the room where the witnesses are—
That was enough.
Mr. Breelich, did board members talk about the case involving Mr. Bruce prior to the hearing? Did you ever discuss the evidence outside of an executive session prior to the special session on July 29th?
That was right on.
So on July 29th, based on findings from an internal investigation, Mr. Hoball and Superintendent Mr. Springer at a special school board meeting recommend termination of Mr. Bruce's contract. You all voted four-zero unanimously against this recommendation and chose to keep him on paid leave, of course, at the expense of working taxpayers. Mr. DiAgostino, in the board's media statement regarding its decision not to approve the administrator's recommendation for termination of the Bagleys, you said, "The board members voted based on the preponderance of the evidence delivered at the employees' requested conference with the school board, including administrators and representatives." Can you please define for us the term "preponderance of evidence"? Here are two definitions taken from legal dictionaries. Preponderance of the evidence is one type of evidentiary standard used in a burden of proof analysis. Under the preponderant standard, the burden of proof is met when the party with the burden convinces the fact-finder that there is a greater than fifty percent chance that the claim is true. Second definition, the preponderance is based on the more convincing evidence and its probable truth or accuracy, and not on the amount of evidence. So what I think you were trying to say, Mr. DiAgostino, was that there was not a preponderance of evidence in which to terminate the Bagleys, the standard to which an employee can be terminated by your account. For Mr. Bruce's hearing, it is my understanding that the board had the following pieces of evidence: sworn affidavit from the student, sworn testimony from the student's mother, a two-month-long open DCS investigation and criminal investigation involving Mr. Bruce based on alleged Snapchat messages that may have contained inappropriate photos of a student, a recommendation from the district administration based on Mr. Springer's internal investigation, Mr. Bruce's admission to Snapchatting with the student, and video evidence of Mr. Bruce being alone with the student in his office. Please explain to me and everybody here how all of this—this information did not represent a preponderance of evidence.
At this time, I would advise that that hearing will sound in privacy pursuant to Indian law, and it would be inappropriate for you to comment on any evidence of evidence
Going to fast-forward again. On September 24th, as stated, the school board voted against the administration's recommendation to cancel the teaching contracts of Mr. and Mrs. Bagley. In reference to the Bagleys, the board provided the following statement to RTV6. "Based on communication from our school board attorney, our school board is not aware of any investigation by the Hendrix County Sheriff's Department or other state, county, and local agencies regarding these two employees. Although we are not aware of a criminal investigation of the Bagleys, there was an internal investigation. Mr. Springer recommended termination following the conclusion of his findings. As a superintendent that was rated highly effective in all of his evaluations by you, the board, I imagine he did a thorough job in his investigation and didn't just walk in and tell you guys, he simply didn't like the Bagleys and wanted them fired. I mean, Mr. Springer's recommendation had to have been based on something he discovered in his investigation." Mrs. Griffith, you are a school psychologist, is that correct? What does the term "mandated reporter" mean with regard to school personnel? A mandated reporter is a person who, because of his or her profession, is legally required to report any suspicion of child abuse or neglect to the relevant authorities. These laws are in place to prevent children from being abused and to end any possible abuse or neglect at the earliest possible stage. Mrs. Griffith, are the Bagleys considered mandated reporters? Well, they are. Was it Mr. Springer's position that the Bagleys failed to act as mandated reporters? In Mr. Springer's recommendation to terminate Mr. or Mrs. Bagley's contracts, did he provide any evidence indicating that Mr. or Mrs. Bagley failed to act as mandated reporters? Did Mr. and Mrs. Bagley refute the details of Mr. Springer's rationale for their termination? If they did not refute the details, then why were the details of Mr. Springer's investigation not viewed—as a preponderance of evidence—for their termination? If Mr. and Mrs. Bagley did refute Mr. Springer's evidence, why did you not pursue terminating Mr. Springer for lying to you and making up the evidence? So either Mr. and Mrs. Bagley denied the evidence in what Mr. Springer said and presented, in which you should have fired him for making up evidence and being a liar, or they didn't deny it, and you have all chosen to keep them as active administrators in the school The district's webpage states, and I quote, "It's worth noting that prior to July 2019, the board unanimously supported the superintendent's recommendations ninety-nine percent of the time." I agree. That is worth noting. Up until this investigation that involves the Vice President of the board's family member and the President of the board's longtime close friends of over ten years, never once did you guys vote against Mr. Springer's recommendations. While I realize some people are simply sick of hearing about this and want to move forward, many of us are concerned what the price is in doing that. Individually, these facts could be mere coincidences, but in conjunction with one another begs us to ask, are the board's actions a strategic effort to serve and protect you, the members, your friends, and family, at the expense of the safety and well-being of students? This community needs to trust their school board with whom they're entrusting their children. But in doing so, would suggest that Mr. Benner, after fourteen years, abruptly resigned for no reason, it means that Mr. Springer's recommendations for termination were baseless, that it's okay for a group of decision-makers to be made up of friends and family of the persons in question, and that a family who did not make the initial call to DCS has made up stories that line up with the original DCS call, putting themselves through the wringer to file a fraudulent lawsuit over an issue that they did not originally even bring to light. This is what you are asking the community to believe, and this is why the community isn't believing any of it. The integrity of the school board has been jeopardized and leaves only one solution. As parents of children in the Northwest Hendrix School Corporation, as residents, tax-paying citizens of the school district, and as representatives of the many concerned community members, we ask that each board member—Jim DiAgostino, Brad Williams, Cindy Griffith, Craig Peoples, and Craig Breelich—immediately resign from your positions and allow for a new school board to take position, a new school board to re-establish integrity and confidence in our community.
Amen.
Shawn Ludwig.
I'm glad she already took care of it. Thank you.
Please provide us with an update on your conversation with the Hendrix County Sheriff's Department and/or the prosecutor of Hendrix County.
I've been in touch with the prosecutor, Lord help, and at this time, there is just an ongoing investigation and nothing further to add.
Thank you for that update, Sherri.
First off, I just want to say, you know, my kids have been in the school district for quite some years. One of the things the administration and the teachers have always talked to them about is accountability. Accountability for their homework, accountability for their actions. What I would most like to see out of you all and the people involved in this, you know, incident that's going on, is accountability for your actions, and accountability for the people that are responsible for it. I've seen none of that. I don't think it's fair for everyone to sit there and preach to all these kids about accountability for what they're doing, when none of you and Tyler Bruce and the Bagleys have not been held accountable for what they've played in it. And now we're paying a PR—you guys are paying a PR consultant to sit back and answer questions? You know, that's wasting our tax dollars, once again. And I don't think that's fair to us. I mean, money's being spent, you know, we've had to pay, you know, for people's contracts, and Benner supposedly left for a better offer. I hardly think that Wayne Township is a better offer. And, I mean, all these oversights that you guys talk about, are there any more? I mean, I don't feel safe sending my kids to school with anybody anymore, because I don't trust anybody in this school system. I don't think you're sending a fair message to young women, because it's basically saying they can be treated any way, because Tyler Bruce is a sociopath. You know, not to mention it's not sending a good message to young men, because it's letting them know that they can treat young women any way they want to, and he can just sit back on his ass and, you know, get paid. So I would like to see some accountability out of everybody in this situation, because there has been none. So have a nice day, and I hope—you know, welcome you, and I hope you realize what fine mess they just walked you into.
Thank you. First of all, Tiffany, thanks for talking, and Sherri, that was really good addressing the board like you did. I'm not going to be surprised that none of you are going to say anything, because it seems like y'all are too scared to talk, which is pretty sad. You know, I try and keep three things at the center of my life, and it's honesty, hard work, and integrity. And furthermore, doing the right thing, what needs to be done. Continuing with what other people have stated tonight and before me, I'm just here to express myself and my family's deepest concerns with how our tax money's being spent. Everyone in this school system pays a few thousand dollars to the school district every year for property taxes. And I know that they were just due for everybody, so it's pretty relevant. You know, we pay several thousand dollars in taxes to this school system every year, and to see you guys act like this in front of everybody is ridiculous. We generally don't have an issue at all with paying our part in supporting schools. I've been through these schools, and they're good. They need work. Especially when—but we don't have a problem, especially when it comes to hiring extremely talented and great teachers, staff, and for the betterment of our schools. And we're more than happy for these hard-working staff tonight to get a raise. That's great. I'm glad you guys are able to do that. However, when you guys are spending property tax money uncontrollably on things you guys can do yourselves, every single one of you is sitting there with a laptop in front of you. Why can't you guys do the PR stuff? No one—no one had any idea about this PR rep, and honestly, I have full confidence that one of you guys could do it. You know, property tax money's contributed from everybody, but how come we didn't get a chance to share our opinion on any of this? We never got a chance to say what we wanted. You guys are one of the highest-paid boards in the state. Start doing the right thing. We want transparency, we want integrity from every single one of you. If you can't provide that, get out and resign, and let somebody do it that can provide those things and be transparent and speak at a board meeting when somebody talks to you. Thanks.
I actually have more statements than questions, so I'm actually going to address the group, because you're not going to answer me anyway. We've gone through this rodeo. So as a mom who has several children in this school district, some of you have heard me speak before. I really don't care whether you like what I say or not, but as a concerned parent, you all need to hear what I say this evening. As you—the board has all stated, the lack of evidence to terminate Tyler Bruce and both the Bagleys were minimal at best—minimal at best, right? Okay. So however, I would like to point out that during all the hearings that the board presided over, that you were all shown a very descriptive timeline of events that went from February of 2019 until the day of the hearing in July for Tyler Bruce, and up until the day of the hearing for the Bagleys in August. Okay? I understand that you heard of the report that was made by Cindy Griffith on February 8th at 7:30 in the morning about her daughter witnessing Tyler Bruce and the victim working out together multiple times and sometimes alone. It is my understanding that you all heard of the multiple reports, seventeen in fact, that were coming into the Tri-West High School hotline at the end of February regarding Tyler Bruce and the victim in regards to an alleged emotional and/or physical relationship between the two. I'm also aware that there were two admins that could access that information. Excuse me. And when the second admin made a point to say, "We need to handle the situation," she was removed and blocked from any access to that tip line. However, Stacy Bagley remained. I also have the understanding that the board was informed that at that time, there were only three reports that were given to the superintendent, and the other fourteen were erased and discarded. The board was informed of that, mind you. It is my understanding that the board was made aware that Tyler Bruce's wife found Snapchat conversations not from one girl, but multiple girls, on his phone during spring break. Okay? It is odd that the volleyball coach gets dismissed with one. I understand that you were all made aware of an off-duty female police officer who stopped by Stacy Bagley's office shortly after spring break to notify her of inappropriate Snapchats that Tyler was in possession of. In fact, there's video of this officer stopping by in the school surveillance system. Okay? I understand that you were all shown video of the inappropriate situation that was reported. In fact, just one—not one video, multiple videos that were taken by the school surveillance system. It's also my understanding that you all heard the testimony of Stacy Bagley admitting she and her husband Nathan Bagley had knowledge of several matters involving Tyler and the victim before there was anything reported. Stacy Bagley made you all aware of her statement was in regards to those situations. Word for word, I am not calling DCS, because I don't have to. If I get fired, I get fired. As a mom, that pisses me off. In response to her knowledge of those situations is where that statement came from. However, she's back in our system, back in our school system. She's keeping an eye on her kids, though, and making them safe, right? No. It is also my understanding that when you found out who the whistleblower was, you actually recommended that Mr. Springer terminate him on the grounds of having a female student in his office alone, reported by Cindy Griffith's daughter. That's odd. For also having a misogynist post on Facebook—false, also found false. I'm also aware—made aware that part of Mr. Springer's severance package for resignation—excuse me—is that the school board requested that the whistleblower erase the video footage he downloaded. And for anyone's information, those videos have been forwarded to authorities. In conclusion, none of this is grounds for termination—none of that is grounds for termination. None of it's grounds for termination, just in case you all are aware. Okay? The school board has chosen to look past the fact— just in case you all are aware. Okay? The school board has chosen to look past the facts and guarantee that their buddies stay in our school system, not your school system, our school system. You've guaranteed that these people stay here. Okay? The board has admitted the longtime friendship between Board President DiAgostino and the Bagleys, and the board stated it did not see any issue with DiAgostino continually, continuing to socialize with his friends, the Bagleys, while they were on paid leave. One example was DiAgostino was seeing, playing golf with Mr. Bagley while he was on paid leave. In fact, my husband saw that when my daughter showed up on our home course. Although it gives the appearance of abuse of power when DiAgostino voted to put his longtime friends on paid leave and subsequently voted against the superintendent's recommendation to terminate his longtime friends, the Bagleys. The board admitted it was an oversight that Board Vice President Williams voted to put his nephew Tyler Bruce on leave. If the vice president knew he was not going to participate in his nephew's due process hearing, why was he even in there in the first place? Why did he go and speak to the family after speaking with the board members on his way out, which seems highly suspicious and an abuse of power? Then during the summer, both Board President DiAgostino and Vice President Williams were seen together socializing, excuse me, socializing with Tyler Bruce at the Mason Inn. These three casually hanging out together while Tyler Bruce is being investigated and on paid leave certainly paints a very bad picture for the board. Not to mention that both DiAgostino and Mr. Williams have both voted in regards to issues directly involving Tyler. Tyler Snapchatting with multiple female students alone is grounds for termination. Stacy Bagley's willful disobedience of the law is grounds for termination and should be actually a criminal offense, as well as Mr. Bagley full well knowing what was happening in the grounds, is grounds for termination. Also, for anyone else that's made this statement, she's 16, she knew what was doing, I pray that there is never a day that your child looks up to a teacher or respects him and someone fully well takes advantage of the situation. I pray that never happens to you. And for all the teachers that sat by and watched this grown man groom these students for over a year, how dare you stand by and not do anything? No one spoke up. There were students that called the hotline and still, no one did anything. Congratulations, school board. You have just made Tri-West a welcoming place for criminally, for criminally people. You all should be criminally charged with neglect. The school system has become a place where certain faculty are looking out for their friends and not their families. And students that attend here, do the right thing. Step down, all of you. And Mr. Seiberson, I would love to see your recommendations for the termination of Tyler Bruce and the Bagleys.
Tri-West High School. Had no idea. But I came out here and I found out that it was a very tight-knit community with teachers who really felt their job was to teach our children. I have raised four children, or we have raised four children in this community. They're all very successful due to there's a lot of people that are set in this community right now, sitting here. There are teachers, administrators in this, in this room right now. I, I guess I'm pretty emotional about this community out here because I've been out here so long. I've been out here since 1981. I've watched different administrators. Need to be appreciative. The teachers are working hard. The ones that, how'd I put this? The, the ones that, they all come here to teach our children, taught my children. I had a grandchild, an oldest grandchild said, "I'd really like to go to Tri-West." And she goes to Carmel. And she goes to Carmel. Don't interrupt, please.
We agree that the teachers are great. It's the board.
Let me speak. I let you speak. Okay? I want to thank the teachers. I want to thank the administrators, the school board for doing their jobs. I think you do a great job. I think you have to do a great job. I've had the opportunity to build three homes in this community and I pay my taxes just like you all do. Okay? So, thank you, teachers. Thank you, administrators. I'm done. For giving for leaving, but I have to go be a grandparent to pick up my rent.
My name's Crystal Benner. I am the proud wife of Adam Benner. We have three wonderful children at Tri-West. I just felt compelled to come to the meeting to share some positive news that I feel is happening at Tri-West schools. There are so many teachers and staff that I could name that have gone above and beyond for my children and countless others. These teachers and staff work tirelessly so all of our children can be successful in the school building and out. I'm going to name some. Ms. Starnes, fifth grade teacher. Mrs. Douglas, the secretary at PES. Mrs. Bidding and Mrs. Higby at PPS. Mrs. D, Mrs. Wiley at the middle school, along with Mrs. Albert, Mrs. Quinn, Miss Mullpury, Mr. Bontrager at the high school. The list could absolutely go on and on. Many of these teachers had all three of my children. Thank you, teachers and staff, for all you do for our students. Not only are our students learning academic skills, but teachers and staff are teaching our students more important lessons, such as compassion, integrity, and work ethic. These things will last long after our students graduate. Thank you.
It's been difficult to hear you guys in the back. That's part of why I was asking that question. I'm Dr. Heather Armstrong. I'm a psychologist. I practice here in Hendricks County. I'm also the proud, proud mom of a freshman here. And I have a daughter who will be starting kindergarten in the district next year. So, I'm going to be here a while. I was super excited when I found out that Mr. Springer was doing a community safety thing last year and I was able to participate in that. Was anybody else in that here? Okay. So, I had reached out to some folks on Facebook saying, "Hey, I'm participating in this. I think it'd be great. If anybody wants to share any information, I'll try to like, head it on and give it to those who, who might need it." I was absolutely disturbed by the number of people that reached out to me and told me some of the things that had happened to their children in our district. Now, I work with trauma every day. That's my job. I have to help protect our children. I want to know that I can trust to remain here, that I can trust you guys, that I can trust this district to take care of my kids. No matter if somebody believes this person did that or whatever, at the end of the day, what matters is that our kids get an education, that they're healthy, that they're taken care of, and that they're safe. I had concerns for years, beginning in middle school for my daughter, about safety. Walk straight into the building here, gun in hand, nobody can stop them. Take 20 minutes to get an officer from Pittsboro Elementary to North Salem. So, safety has been a concern for me for a very long time. And I feel like the things that have happened here in our district since July with the whole blow-up with Tyler Bruce, that's just a symptom. There are so many things that need to be addressed here. And we don't have enough resources. That's one of the biggest problems. We all pay tax dollars, right? But it's not enough. It's not enough. And we're spending so much money trying to do the PR thing and make everybody happy and whatever. It's not working. Our choir director, he gets like an $862 stipend per year, but we're paying the PR person $750 a day? No wonder, as parents, we have to run around like crazy, sell born sedas. It just doesn't make any sense. But I just, I really hope that all the people that are here tonight will continue to stay involved. Don't let this just be a one-shot deal of coming here and seeing what this is about because there's so much that's going on and so many great things that are, that's happening too, with our kids, with our teachers. I agree. That's part of why we came to this community. I think we all need to take a moment and pause and be thankful for what we have. Try to work together in some capacity because our children are suffering. I mean, my daughter sent an email to the entire school district about her concerns because she's up till midnight because she has friends that want to, in their lives, over bullying, over being touched inappropriately in our schools. This doesn't make any sense to me. I'm not okay with that. And neither should you or any of you. Thank you.
With this situation and with everything coming forward, would you guys feel safe with having your kids here with somebody that you didn't know? Is that something that anybody would be okay with, with just even having the suspicion of it? No? I, I wouldn't either. I'd never ask that, by the way. But, now, the other question that I have is, a lot of times with, with paid suspensions, paid leaves, whatever you want to call it, a lot of times that you would have to be restricted to certain things. Do you guys have any, any policies on that? Does he have to be at home from 8 to 4? Does he have to be not allowed to work another job during the day? Is there, is there policies regarding that? Anybody? Okay. Well, most companies that there is, and if he isn't home during that time, that's considered your work time, 8 to 5 or whenever the working day is. If he's not there, then usually they would consider that, just like if you wouldn't come to work. That's leaving your job. That's abandonment. All right? So, there's, there's a lot of concerns that that's not what he's doing. And then also, with, with that, have you guys, has there been information that was previously submitted that has been taken back or redacted or deleted? I'll just leave it at that.
My name is Amanda Wiley and I am a proud parent of four Tri-West students, as well as being a teacher in this district for over 20 years. In the past months, the staff members of the Northwest Hendrick Schools have been under fire and this has incited me to speak this evening. One comment that cut me to the core recently was that Northwest Hendrick Schools used to have good teachers. As a staff, we support one another. We are, we are not only coworkers, but we are a family. We celebrate together and shed tears together. We work closely together to do what is best for your students, for our students. Through this process, we of course become close friends. We have relationships both inside and out of the classroom. As I am aware, I am sure many of you have coworkers that you are close with and spend time with outside of the workplace. When you spend a large amount of time working with people, you have a tendency to become close knit. We are human beings. Something I feel has been forgotten. Social media has allowed teachers, administrators, and board members to become open targets. It is easy to hide behind the words of a Facebook post. When we read comments about ourselves or our colleagues, it hurts. We don't post about you and how you do your job. We deserve some, the same respect. Before you take your issue to social media, I ask that you give us the respect and have a conversation with us. As professionals, our doors are, are open for communication and doing what is best for your student. I, if you have questions or concerns, we welcome a conversation to do what is best for your student. All things Pittsboro and chatter pages are not the place. I have witnessed others standing up and speaking for the teachers of our district. I can't speak for every teacher here, but I can tell you that not one of those persons have personally asked me if I was afraid to come to work or if I was afraid of retribution of any sort. Please do not make assumptions or generalizations about the, our feelings on our jobs. We come in every day, give your children the best we can despite whatever noise is going on around us and especially when it is negative and our names are being drug through the mud. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, you're not. It is unfortunate that we find ourselves in this current situation. It is unfortunate that the issue being tried in the court of public opinion instead of allowing the authorities to do their jobs. And it is especially unfortunate that members of the community feel like it is acceptable to treat the staff, school board, and administrators with total disrespect. Indiana is currently experiencing a teacher shortage. For those of you who think you can do better, feel free to get your license and experience school from the other side. Thank you.
That's kind of a tough act of thought. Really is. My name is Tim Kern. I have been a staff member at Tri-West High School for 28 years. Many of you know that this is a good place and it always has been, and I believe that it will continue to be. And I'm here to say, have faith and trust in us that we will do the right thing as teachers because that's what we've done, that's what we will continue to do, that's what's made us great. We are a great school corporation. I'm here to stand up for that, stand up for my fellow teachers. We don't deserve the abuse that we're getting. Perhaps some, some poor choices were made, but that does not represent us as a whole. We are a good school, good school corporation. We are a good school at Tri-West High School. Have faith in us to do our jobs and we'll do that well, to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
So, I haven't been up and spoke at all through this whole thing. And it's a pretty emotional thing for my family right now. And I just want you guys to know, it's not about the teachers. The majority of these teachers have done an incredible job and I support all these teachers that have come out here and spoke tonight. That's not it. It's about the one or two that caused cancer in this community that you guys aren't taking care of, that's making the entire community look bad. It's not the good ones. She's a good one. There's other ones that are out here that are good too. They've all worked hard for their jobs. But there are the molesters out there that aren't doing their jobs and there are all the people that need to get fired because not everybody in that school district is great. Yes, 95% of them probably are, but 5% of them aren't. And right now, the five in front of me need to go.
Thank you, Mark.
It isn't about the teachers, the good teachers. We have family members that are good teachers. It's the bad apple that spoils the whole. They know who they are. You shouldn't be protecting them. Get them out. You guys can be great. We're not saying that. You aren't when you have a child molester in your wall, in the building. You aren't. You need to protect those children. You want to have a discussion? That's my granddaughter. It happened. And some of you know it. Some of you know it. And you sit here and you protect him. Don't pretend like you're the great teacher. If you support him, you're part of the problem.
Regardless of that.
It's not about the teachers. It's about Tyler Bruce. So, you're going to defend him?
Regardless of that.
How do you think you're hurting? What do you think about our family?
I'm not, I'm not arguing.
Have you seen any compassion for that victim?
It's not, the teachers. You're damn right I have because what if it was your kid? How would you feel? No, I have not. Who have I called out? Because my kid is struggling inside of him right now because she hates it and my kid's not the only one.
I have a motion to adjourn.
And you let my other one get bullied in your class because I got a video of you telling him to shut up and sit down. So you're no like that.
Do you think it was appropriate to vote on a matter involving your nephew? Mr. DiAgostino, what's your, uh, response to the request to resign?
You can talk to our communications director.
But you're an elected official.
You can talk to our communications director.
You're not gonna answer any of our questions.
You can talk to our communications director.